For those in the streaming world, good evening. There's a lot of welcoming here amongst the people. It took us a little while to get everybody settled down, but we're now on Dennis for tonight's meeting of Tuesday, November 13th. I'd appreciate if all those here would stand, and I will direct you into the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of silence. The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the breathing justice for all.
Please remain standing. A moment of silence for the brave men and women that protect this great nation. Give them the fortitude and the strength to continue doing what they're doing. God bless those that have given us the ultimate with their lives. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We have a agenda that's really jam-packed tonight, however, it depends upon how much conversation we have about so many things as to how early we make it finished. I will announce ahead of time wherever we are at 10 o'clock was the topic, so hopefully we'll get everything done by 10 o'clock. I have to announce under the Chairman's report, the Board met an executive session on a personnel matter prior to tonight's meeting and also prior to the October 29th meeting on a police labor matter. Shelley Schubaker has resigned from the Historical Commission for personal reasons, for personal reasons, I mean. An application for a liquor license has been submitted for a giant store up on Boot Road, and the Chester County Planning Commission has out now for people to look at Landscapes 3, which is the comprehensive plan for the county. If anybody's interested in doing it, we have a copy. You can take a look at it and make any comments you'd like. And on November 29th, when the theater, the Uptown Theater in Westchester, they hope to be able to approve this predicated upon one information to get between now and then. I would ask, is if there's anybody here tonight for making a comment on non-agenda items, anything that's not on agenda, is anybody here to do that? Well, it's not that saved a whole lot of time. I'm going to use my authority here, and since we have a public hearing tonight, and there's people here on the clock, including our solicitor right now, I will switch down to the public hearing, my conditional use hearing, and I would introduce Kristin Camp over at my far right, who is our solicitor. This is a public hearing. I'll let her lead us in the proceedings through this, and then we will go back to the agenda and then follow any order that is on the, everything's listed. With that in mind, I will turn everything over to Kristin and welcome her once again to our meeting, and also tell you once again that she is one of our, and our main solicitor. So, it's all yours, Kristin, who is running around dropping off material.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is a conditional use application of Eske Development LLC. The applicant is the equitable owner of a four-acre parcel located at 1302 Wilson Drive. That parcel was identified as Chester County Tax Parcel 53-3-1.2C. The property is owned by S. period Winnig Associates Limited Partnership. The applicant seeks conditional use approval pursuant to Section 240-19 to develop and operate the child daycare center on the property. I'm going to introduce some board exhibits. First is Board Exhibit 1, which was the conditional use application dated August 28, 2018, received on 9/9/2018. B2, Site Layout Plan, that came with the conditional use application. That plan was prepared by D.L. Howe Engineering and is dated September 17, 2018. B3, Proof of Publication in the Daily Local News. Tonight's hearing was advertised on October 29th and November 5th, 2018. The fourth exhibit was email correspondence from the applicant's counsel to me granting an extension of time to hold the hearing. And, Mr. Jarris, I do notice in this email that you granted it until November 11th, but today's November 13th, so if you could just state on the record that the applicant waived the timeframe to hold the hearing until tonight.
That was just dramatic pause. No, yes, we extend to the third.
Okay. I'm not sure where the 11th came from. That might have been a mistake on my part. B5 was, as the township typically does, they send notices of any public hearings and developments that go forward to property owners within a thousand feet. So, that letter went out on September 25th, 2018. They try to advise potentially interested parties in the various meetings that go on, including this particular hearing. So, that went out, and all of those are marked to be five. B6, the property has to be posted based on the state law, and the property was posted on November 2nd, 2018, and there are photographs to evidence the posting. Board Exhibit 7 is a letter from the Township Engineer, Penoni Associates. This was the first review, and it was dated September 28, 2018. Board Exhibit 8 was the Township's Planning Commission, their recommendation to the board, and that letter is dated November 8th, 2018. So, the board, excuse me, the Planning Commission had a meeting on November 7th, and at that meeting, they voted unanimously for the board to adopt the following motion. They moved that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the conditional use application based on the conditional use site layout plan, which was dated September 17, 2018, and it was last revised October 26, 2018. Board Exhibit 9 was a subsequent review letter from the Township Engineer, Penoni Associates. That letter was dated November 7th, 2018, and that again was based on revisions that were made to the conditional use plan. And then the last exhibit, Board Exhibit 10, is staff's recommendation to the board. This came from Mark Gordon, your Township Zoning Officer, memorandum of November 8th, 2018, with staff's recommendation that the board approve conditional use subject to various conditions that are stated in that memorandum. So, with that, Mr. Jarris, do you have any objections to the admissions of Board Exhibits 1 through 10?
No objections.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to be recognized as a party to this proceeding, which means you own property in close proximity, and you feel that you would be aggrieved by a decision rendered by the board? Anybody that would like to be recognized? Okay, let the record reflect that nobody has requested party status. Mr. Jarris, we had indicated to you that if there were no parties, that you could do sort of a summary version of who your witnesses are and what their testimony would be, you know, maybe introduce, excuse me, who your witnesses would be, go through generally what you're asking for. If the board has specific questions to those witnesses, we can go forward in that fashion.
Because we stream, anybody that wants to make any comments, would they please use the podium so that the people that are in the streaming world can understand what you're saying? I appreciate that, thank you.
And you may just want to, then, in light of that, bring, I don't know if everybody was going to be your witnesses, can stand up by the podium and be sworn, so that if you ask them a question or at the end, if they had to respond to a question from the board, they'd already be sworn in.
And we will do that. For the record, John Jarris, representing the applicant. This evening, we anticipated this might be the circumstance, therefore, I would ask that the following witnesses please stand and be recognized. Anthony Diver, on behalf of the applicant, Eske Development LLC; Jody Thompson, Duckling State Care Centers; Zach Picard, Duckling State Care Centers; Joseph Frisella, D.L. Howan Associates Civil Engineer; and last but not least, Andy Heinrich, Heinrich &amp; Klein, our Traffic Engineer. And with the board's permission, I would ask that the witnesses be sworn simultaneously, and then I will offer an offer of proof to the board, essentially summarizing, as Ms. Camp indicated, what these witnesses would testify to. They will listen to that offer of proof, and then I will ask them individually if that represents the sum and substance of what they individually would testify to, if that's okay with the board. Very good. I'll turn over to the board.
Do you want to raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give in matter now being heard will be the truth, the whole truth, and the living truth, so be it.
I do, I do.
You all may be seated while I read the following into the record. The subject, I'm sorry, if I ask Mr. Frisella to hand up to the board supervisors some previously marked exhibits, and they are applicant's exhibits A1 through A11, and I'll identify them for the record. A1 is the first and last page redacted of an agreement of sale between the applicant and the seller dated July 31, 2018. A2 is a Chesko View aerial photo of the property. A3 is the conditional use site layout plan prepared by D.L. Howan Associates dated October 26, 2018. And for the record, there was a plan submitted for the original application, which was thereafter modified through discussions with the Township Planning Commission. And the plan under A3 that the board sees this evening dated October 26, 2018, is the current plan we're asking for approval for this evening.
And that was the plan the Planning Commission last reviewed.
That is correct. A4 is the conditional use vehicle turning plan prepared by D.L. Howan Associates dated October 26, 2018. A5 is the traffic impact assessment prepared by Heinrich &amp; Klein Associates Inc. dated September 13, 2018. They are without exhibits, and Ms. Camp has the reports from our consultants with the full addendum attached to those. A6 is a response letter to the township from Heinrich &amp; Klein Associates dated November 9th, 2018, and that was after a review letter had been issued by McMahon Associates, the Township Traffic Engineer. A7 is a preliminary floodplain analysis post-development prepared by D.L. Howan Associates Inc. dated November 1st, 2018, again, without exhibits. Ms. Camp has the full study. A8, floodplain analysis prepared by D.L. Howan Associates Inc. dated October 2nd, 2018, again, without exhibits. Ms. Camp has the full report. A9 is proposed sign graphic prepared by L. Mark Signs Graphics dated November 29th, 2017, offering an example of the signage that the applicant would propose in this application. A10 is the CV of Joseph Frisella of D.L. Howan Associates Inc., and A11 is a CV of Andy Heinrich of Heinrich &amp; Klein, our Traffic Engineer. With that, ladies and gentlemen, if you would just listen to this offer of proof. The subject property is an undeveloped four-acre tract, Folio Number 53-3-1.2-C, located on the south side of Wilson Drive to the east and contiguous to, or with, bless you, the Calico Business as shown in Exhibit A2. The subject property is owned by S. Winnig Associates LP, and the applicant is the equitable owner of same pursuant to an agreement of sale dated July 31, 2018, a redacted copy of which is in the exhibit packet as Exhibit A1. The property is owned I-1 Light Industrial District. A child daycare facility is permitted by Section 240-19.26 of the Township Zoning Ordinance. The plan, as you see under Exhibit A3, proposes a 14,000-square-foot building with a 3,000-square-foot enclosed play area, along with 60 parking spaces with access off of Wilson Drive. 24 additional parking spaces were added to the plan pursuant to discussions with the Township Planning Commission to be constructed on the neighboring property to the west, who is in fact the same owner of the subject property. Overflow parking, approximately 35 parking spaces for three or four high-volume events at the daycare facility throughout the year, will also be available on the Calico property to our west. An emergency access to the adjacent Calico property was added, along with improved bus and emergency vehicle access. An emergency vehicle turning template plan is included under Exhibit A4. The facility is currently planned to house the Ducklings Early Learning Center facility, owned by Jody Thompson and operated by her franchisee, Zach Picard.
Could you spell his last name, I'm sorry?
P.I.C.K.A.R.D. Zach?
Yes, that's right.
The center with, the center will house approximately 142 students ranging in age from six weeks to kindergarten, with approximately 27 employees who report and disperse at varying times throughout the morning and afternoon-evening hours. All necessary permitting and licensure requirements will be obtained prior to opening of the facility. A proposed driveway will cross the stream and floodplain, and all required permits will be obtained for same. A floodplain analysis report or reports were prepared by D.L. Howan Associates in the exhibit packet at Exhibits A7 and A8, and demonstrate that all other improvements aside from the driveway crossing are located outside of the FEMA, that's all caps F-E-M-A, flood hazard zone and floodplain. A traffic impact assessment was prepared by Andy Heinrich of Heinrich &amp; Klein, Exhibit A5 in your packet, along with a follow-up letter dated November 9th, 2018, Exhibit A6, in response to comments from the Township Traffic Engineer, and demonstrate that new traffic generated by the proposed child daycare center will not have a significant traffic impact on the adjacent roadways and can be accommodated in a safe and efficient manner after development. Exhibit A9 depicts a rendering of the proposed signage for the facility, which will comply with the Township Regulations for same and be subject to a signed permit application once the facility is constructed. The proposed facility meets all the applicable area and bulk requirements, as well as design requirements of the Township Zoning Ordinance. The application is in compliance with the specific objective criteria for the conditional use set out in the Township Zoning Ordinance. The CVs of both Mr. Frisella and Mr. Heinrich are contained within our packet of exhibits at Exhibit A10 and A11. And for those, ladies and gentlemen, who might be tuning in via streaming, to my right is a copy of Exhibit A3, a colored copy depicting the property in question, the proposed building, and parking facilities and driveway out to Wilson Drive. And with that, I would ask the individual witnesses, after hearing that offer of proof in support of our application, would you agree that if you were to give sworn testimony that in effect would reflect what I've indicated here this evening? Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mr. Frisella?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrich?
Yes.
That is essentially the sum and substance of our application, and I would move into evidence applicant's Exhibits A1 through A11.
Board, have any questions for Mr. Jarris or any of the witnesses?
I do. Good evening.
Good evening.
We had a discussion, I believe, you had with Mike, with Mark Gordon, to consider splitting any large events that you have because of parking problems, and I understand that you are in agreement to do something like that.
Oh, Mr. Batavio, splitting, I'm not quite sure. I think what we told the Planning Commission, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would be sensitive to these three or four events we have throughout the year, because we know they are high-yield events, and perhaps, for example, the Halloween parade that the facility conducts, we would try to break that into two segments, perhaps for the very young children and their parents during one part of the day, and then the older children and their parents during the latter part of the day, to try and break up any attendance that would come in relation to those events. So, that's what we represented to the Planning Commission, and I believe that's what the owner and operator would agree to.
Okay. If you go to Exhibit A4 for a moment, what you're showing is our truck turning plan, et cetera, et cetera. I guess my only question, if you have a, it's funny, this school is laid out pretty close to my wife's school, where she was an educator, as far as parking and entrance into the school. Realizing that you've got the turning radius is cleared for fire apparatus and emergencies, my only secondary concern, knowing that you're going to be a very successful entity, and you're going to have 142 and a half students or children, well, I'm throwing a "half" in there. You're liable to get people when they park to double park, because they're only going to be there for 20 minutes, 10 minutes, or meet your teacher night or something. That is very important to me as supervisor and fire marshal, to make sure that you have adequate staff that will be able to externally monitor that parking area to make sure that it doesn't become encumbered. I'd hate to have the turning radius in the room, but have two cars blocking any egress into the property.
Understood, and it was, it's a very valid point. It was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting, and during that discussion and in the response to that discussion, we added the 24 spaces that you see along the property line on the abutting property, which in fact, we will have an agreement with that property owner and submit it for the Township Solicitor's review as part of land development. But you'll see also, Mr. Batavio, the parking area that is in light color on the Calico property, that also has been discussed with that property owners being available as overflow for those events, three or four minutes throughout the year, in order to try and eliminate exactly what your preference is.
And that's appreciated, but my, again, I understand that, and I think that's great. Will you have some additional staff available to do an outside check? Because I've done it myself, gone to that school. You're pulling in, and you're only going to be in there for 10 minutes, and the parking lot's full, so what are you going to do? You're going to park right back up a couple cars. Well, then you get into the school, and you get one thing into another, until someone gets on the P.A. system and says, "Excuse me, there's a blah-blah blocking the driveway." I need to, I need to have a comfy feeling that you will make every attempt to have staff available to do an external check, to make sure that that doesn't happen and block the egress.
Carmen, do you mean around the bulk of the call?
Not so much the bulk, but if you're, if you come in, if you come in, you're coming in, and the parking space is on the left, you have the first, you have the first sort of a vegetation area, then there's more parking spaces before you get to the corner of the building. That would be a perfect place to double park, because I'm just running in the door to do something. Am I sort of showing where it is correctly? The first entrance, the first left entrance to the door to the building, you see a little path going to the building? That's an area where you could double park, because you're just going to run in, so to speak. I just need to make sure that if you feel that there's a lot of people in there, that you send someone out to make sure that this is not blocked.
Mr. Picard, you might want to respond to that up here at the microphone.
Thank you, yes. We do plan to have, you know, we have, we'll have a director, you know, at the door full-time, so they will be able to monitor the exterior parking lot and make sure that, you know, nobody's double parking in this, you know, in this area or even in the turning. So, we'll have, definitely have the staff in order to do that, to monitor the parking lot, and make sure that everything flows fluidly, and, you know, no one's getting locked in because somebody's, you know, blocking their pathway out.
Would that be something that you would be comfortable, if we had it as a condition, something that would be just a reminder that the building owner will make all attempts to keep traffic flow open during events? Make all, you see what I'm saying? You're, you're saying in front of the lights or something.
Might I suggest the applicant will use its best efforts to monitor that traffic flow in the parking lot during those three or four annual events of high yield.
That would go along with the splitting? I mean, that satisfies me, I don't know about others.
I understand what Carmen's saying. I was going to ask a question to that, only to make sure that we're all on the same page about the way this thing is going to function. There's two, two parts to that. One, there's the primary entrance, and then there's, I assume from the big map here, there's a secondary, I'll call it in case, in case there's a problem with the primary entrance, there's a second entrance that comes up and brushes the papers that come in, that comes in as an emergency, as an emergency situation. Yes, sir. Okay, now, going back to, can you describe the manner in which people are going to come in to drop off their kids and also do the reverse in the afternoon under normal circumstances on a daily basis? Because I want to, I want to get an understanding of the flow, and that actually gets into a little bit about what Carmen's issue is with respect to people staying in the driveway as opposed to doing something else. So, whoever would like to do that, could they give us an idea of how the children would be dropped off in the morning and how to be picked up in the afternoon?
Yes, sir, thank you. So, the children, obviously, the traffic path is coming off Wilson Drive into the parking lot. You know, we would restrict our staff parking, which our staffing is staged throughout the morning. So, as our volume of children, you know, increases, we bring in additional staffing to meet those levels. So, you know, first thing in the morning, you may only have a handful of staff members there. If we restrict our staff to the back end of the parking lot, you know, furthest away from the building, to make it easier and less likely that a parent's going to either drop off or pick up in the turnaround areas or, you know, right here at the front entrance corner of the building, so to speak. So, as the volume of children increases, our staffing level increases as well throughout the course of the morning, and then the afternoon's the exact opposite, as children leave, our staff levels decrease. So, you know, the majority of parents will drop off between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., you know, 7:00 o'clock being when we open, 9:00 generally when most folks have to be at work. And then in the evening hours, the afternoon drop-off, most folks are picking up between 3:00 and 6:00.
Do you have an estimate of the peak hour, or the peak time between 7:00 and 9:00, how many cars you would have in one site to drop off children?
The parents, when the, when the parents are dropping off and picking up the children, honestly, they're in the building five, 10 minutes at the tops. I mean, they're in a hurry in the morning to get to work. In the afternoon, they're in a hurry to pick up, get home from work. So, it's a very quick process.
I understand what you're saying, but I, I believe, I'm going to ask this, this is a question, I believe that when people come in, is the idea that they're going to drop the child off at that, the front door, or the only door, or are they going to have to park and bring the child?
They have to park, they have to bring the child into the building, and they have to take the child into their classroom, because they are giving the child over to our custody.
So, the point is that the cars must be parked?
Yes.
Both to pick up and to drop off in the morning?
Yes.
Now, the reasoning is the question of what you estimate the peak period would be, was there's people parking, walking into the building, back out, it takes some time. I'm trying to find out if there's enough parking here. I don't know if the Planning Commission went through this a lot. I'm just asking for my own, my own, my own information, if there's adequate parking under the, during the normal day, not on these unusual, but the normal day, to handle the drop-off and pickup of children?
My Longwood Center is licensed for 138 children, so the numbers are pretty close, and I have 25 parking spaces out front, and it's always, it's always a flow. I've never had double parkers, I've never had people waiting. You might have somebody coming down, waiting for somebody to back out, but it's never been an issue.
And do they do the same thing at your other location? They physically park and bring the students or the children into the classroom?
Right, because the parent is giving custody to the teacher, so the teacher has to physically take the child.
So, I just want to summarize what I think I heard you say. There's 130 kids to be dropped off and picked up during this two-hour period from 7:00 to 9:00. In order to do what your process is in terms of leaving, I'm off and picking them up, you're suggesting that there's 25 places to park a car, and that's adequate to drop off and pick up 130, 140 kids?
You have to remember, some children, some families have two and three children. So, and, okay.
I understand. I'm just, I'm not challenging you, I'm just asking you, that if you, do you, you testify to the fact that you have adequate parking in 25 spaces to handle the drop-off and pickup requirements of the number of children you have, whether they're singles, doubles, or triples?
Yes. She's telling you that her Longwood facility operates the same, they have 138 students in 25 parking spaces, and they don't experience a problem. Here, you have 140 students, right? 142, and 60 parking spaces, plus an additional 35 on the adjacent parcel, which is not likely to be used here. So, the thing you're saying is, based on her experiencing operating another facility, similar number of students, similar operation as far as drop-off, pickup, she hasn't had problems, she's not expecting a problem here. That's, I think, the summary.
Is that what you're saying?
That's it, yes, that's what I said. I agree, I agree with that.
She said for her.
I heard you testify before in the pickup, and I think we got into the same question there.
Yeah.
And there's similar size, similar type of parking issue.
Yes. I think we always have, I have seven, I have six buildings, and there's always a parking issue. always a parking issue, so.
I mean, parking's always a concern, the board doesn't hear about it.
I'm assuming that in that, in that comment, that comment would mean that nobody would be parking or leaving their car in the driveway portion.
That's correct. No one has ever left a car in the driveway. They, you know, we have.
Now, turnaround in the back is for emergency vehicles. That the people would park and pull out of their parking space, I would assume, to get out of them. Once in, parking, they would back out and go back out, the turnaround is not for them, correct?
That's correct.
They may use it, someone may use it, but it's really designed just for fire protection.
Trying to speak it, of course, right back out. Okay. Now, what I would like to suggest to the board, and I understand there was discussion about these high, high demand parking, where you have the highway party and things similar to that. And I know that you're probably going to have to do something about that, because you just can't have cars over the place. However, from my perspective, I think it's prudent to have that as a condition, that anywhere it's expected to have a high volume of cars, that in some fashion, based on your experience, they're separated in some way that minimizes the impact of the, of the parking load, where you have at least two, two different, two different shifts, if you want to call it that. I think we need to put a condition in here that reflects that comment that you made, that you're going to have to do that. But I would like to ensure that, because I like to avoid any problems with parking and any problems with, with that kind of a situation, because my experience has been that, that these type of facilities, if you're going to have a problem, it's going to have to do with people coming and going and trying to find places to park, if in fact, if you're in that kind of a situation. So if you're willing to do that, that's fine. I, I believe that there's no anticipation on parking on Wilson Drive under any circumstances.
That's correct.
Now, that said, I believe that today, you could park on Wilson Drive, but I'm not sure it's such a hot idea with the volume of traffic. So if the board is, is, would agree, I would like to have the manager prepare a ordinance that has no parking on Wilson Drive for anybody, not just you, but anybody. And that would cement that problem, because I think it's too dangerous, there's too much traffic coming out and in in the morning to have anything that's disruptive there with respect to parking. So I don't know if the board would agree to that. That's a separate, that's a separate issue from your, your situation, however, it does in a way have an impact on your situation, because it does avoid having cars parked on the street. So I'm, I'm not suggesting that that be a condition, I'm suggesting that we just ask the manager to prepare that, because we have to have an ordinance to do that. And if the board is acceptable to that, then we'll have him draw up that ordinance. But I, I thought about that in terms of looking at this, and I, I wanted to say, even though I didn't have to say, I wanted to say, just so we, the thinking is that because of the volume of traffic that comes out in the nighttime and the morning, it just doesn't make any sense to have people trying to park there for any reason whatsoever, whether it's your property or somebody else's property. So, I don't know if the board would understand what I'm saying, are you in agreement with that?
Well, nobody parked there now, right?
Well, they may not be parking there now.
And I guess I would say to you, to avoid light of sign, one way to save it becomes a problem.
Well, the problem is, I believe that you could park there now.
Right, but if.
But to avoid, to avoid that problem of someone parking there and causing a problem, if you put up a new parking sign, the matter is, is, is done. And it means you can't park. I think today, people realize they really can't park there, but they could.
There's no need to park there.
They could.
There'd be no need to park there.
They could.
They, they could park, because it's convenient. If you wanted to protect it, you could simply add, simply add another, another condition that stating on the record that there is no parking on Wilson Drive.
Well, but if there's signs, there's no parking on Wilson Drive.
Zoning already allows, zoning already prohibits that. The parking for the use has to be on the lot, so.
I'm not suggesting that, this isn't particularly for them, this is for everybody.
I understand, I just, I don't think it's likely you're going to have people coming to this daycare parking on Wilson Drive. So I think my suggestion would be just that if you wanted to wait and see after the daycare's operational, that ever becomes a problem, you can always ordain a no parking on a, on a township, that's all.
Okay. Anyway, I'm finding a real question.
I'd be that, a separate issue. Yeah, the, the parking on Wilson, a separate issue that we should handle separately to the hearing. And I think if they're, if we're proposing a condition that during special events, we ask that we bifurcate those into two separate ones, could somebody suggest some wording so that we can?
I, I heard that for special events, such as holiday parties, the applicant shall split the student classrooms so that not all parties, so that not all classrooms are having the party at the same time.
I'll, I'll make the motion, I'll add that as a motion, let me have that, Kristin. I'll add that as number five.
You're not going to read my writing, let me write clear, clear.
I know Jan has been to almost all of, all of the planning commission meetings, so there's, Jan, any questions or comments she wants to make?
I, I, I have been to all the planning commission meetings, and I think that the applicant has been very good about making adjustments based on our recommendations, and I am satisfied that they have accomplished what they, what they were asked to do.
Carmen, do you have any more comments?
No, I have one comment, that we do this because we assume that any business in East Scotia is going to become extremely busy and extremely well-run, and we want to try to nip any problems, so that we don't have to bother you down the road.
Hey, Jan, any comments, comments, questions?
No, I agree with Jan, and I also attended the planning commission, been very cooperative. I'm sorry, I make that.
Okay, that says, anybody, do you want to send any, any comments or questions they want to raise? Is that an entertaining motion, is there anybody wants to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll try it. I move that the board supervisors approve the conditional use application and conditional use site layout plan dated 9/17/2018, last revised on October 26, 2018, for a child daycare center use at 1302 Wilson Drive, submitted by E S K E Development to more building systems with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall provide the township readiesments or parking agreements for review and comment by the township solicitor. Thank you. Number two, the applicant shall develop the property and operate the business in accordance with the testimony and exhibits presented during the hearing. Three, any outstanding engineering comments from the township consultants shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the township during the land development approval process. Four, the applicant shall follow all applicable federal, state, county, township laws, rules and regulations during the development of the property and operation of the daycare use. And number five, for special events such as holiday parties, applicant shall split the student classrooms so that all classrooms are not attending their party at the same time. During special events such as holiday parties, applicant will use best efforts to avoid double parking and vehicles blocking access for emergency vehicles.
Very good.
I was thinking the exact same words, Kristin, good job.
I'm ready to go forward, that's good.
If I could just ask, before the vote, the board votes on that, were the applicants exhibited accepted into the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you, do you agree to the conditions that I just outlined?
They are, they are acceptable, yes.
Do your clients have any comments they want to make?
Anything further?
Yeah, we, we're second to the motion.
Oh, we need a second.
Second.
Okay. Anybody else? All of those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
unanimous, thank you very much, thank you very much, appreciate it, good luck.
Thanks for your time. I just want to state, this is one of the quickest conditional use hearings I have ever processed for a client, so we thank you for that.
Well, we can extend it if you want.
No, no, sir, no, sir. My client says, let's get out of here.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
I don't know if you guys want to hold on to your exhibits, if not, I'm going to recycle them.
Now, do you want to talk about, do you want to talk about the number?
I think Kristin had a perfect idea, if it becomes an issue, we deal with it. I'm fine with that. We're all, we're done, we're done. I, I like Kristin's idea that.
I'm sorry, I just observed too, I just graduated from 12 years of dropping off and picking up kids in a daycare facility that had 108 kids and 25 parking spots, in the morning and in the evening, I don't remember ever struggling to find a parking spot, I mean, people are in and out really quickly. And you're right about the special events, they would back up then, but on, on a daily basis, it was not a, not a concern.
And if you look at the long drive, entrance driveway, you're not, people are not going to park on Wilson and have to walk their kids over that long drive. Remember, these, these are two-year-olds and three-year-olds, they, they're not really good at hiking.
I don't, I don't disagree with you there, I, I am not suggesting that this, what I suggested was the sole reason for this, I travel the road so much that to me, it's for anybody, but more importantly, to traffic, it, it's a, it's a road not geared to have parking.
But is anybody parking there today?
I don't know.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I run on that road, there's never.
I drive through there constantly, and to my knowledge, I have never seen cars park there unless they're talking, you know, to people who often.
I'm not sure why somebody would park there at the moment.
I think.
From my perspective, I rather avoid problems than have problems.
I don't like that we put these signs unless we need them, I'd prefer to be reactive, and if something happens, we deal with it very quickly.
You like that? You like that?
I like that, Kristin.
Okay.
I have, I have one question that, that perturbed me, would we require them to mark that circle, no parking, fire, fire lane?
It has to be fire, fire lane only or something like that?
That'd be done through land development, sure.
Or made on the process.
Very good mark, yeah.
That's, that's something that will be required.
Rick, you want Kara to transcribe this for your files, correct?
Yes.
But there's no rush on it, Kara, because we don't need it for the decision. Okay, thank you.
Kara, thank you, have a nice Thanksgiving.
Kristin, you want to hang around a little bit, there's a couple ordinance things we might, we may need your expertise. I want to jump down to old business, I want to drop down to item number A, which is the radio booster ordinance. Rick, do you want to pick up a little bit on that one?
Board members, at the Bellingham incident back in September, when our police officers were clearing the building, they found and discovered that they could not communicate with people outside the building whenever the base of Bellingham. That is somewhat of a concern. The county has a model ordinance that essentially requires new buildings, existing buildings or buildings that are expanded to install with the, what is known as a booster. It essentially takes the radio signal from outside the building, amplifies it, and transmits it inside the building, so that first responders, police, fire can communicate, communicate the new ordinance. And so we have a draft ordinance, which we have, the solicitor has modified, and the suggestion would be is that we should adopt the ordinance. Obviously, there is an expense to building owners, including the township, the system has lost about, cost us about $30,000, but we have a suggestion that we would implement, adopt the ordinance, obviously, any new building would have to install it if needed. There's a revision, if somebody's putting addition on it, that would also have to install it if needed. There's also a requirement that existing buildings should do, would do the test, and if the test indicated they needed to put it in, we would give them a year to do it, because that way they could get it into their budget. If the test indicated that they did not need to do it, then they'd be off the hook.
I like that.
But, so we have a draft ordinance, and if the board is agreeable, or we're recommending the board, we advertise the ordinance for adoption, and in the next year or down, we would send down letters on the affected property owners, so everybody knows about it up front.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to get this started.
I just want to follow up on what Ricky says, in the sense that not only does it describe or prescribe who has to do it, but it also prescribes the testing conditions, that is, what they have to meet. So the whole thing is covered from what you have to do, and, and, and there's going to be many that won't have a problem, won't have to do anything once the initial test is done. My understanding is that, that testing is not particularly expensive, there's more type of facilities, and then the larger facilities, if it's needed, it's needed, but it prescribes the fact what you have to do.
And it also says who has to do the testing. It has to be comfortable, like the professional testing experience.
That's correct.
So with that, before you make a motion, Carmen, does anybody up at the board have any comments or questions? Does anybody, do you want to send any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that staff be directed to send out the letter notifying everybody and schedule the hearing for adoption of this particular ordinance.
Do a second?
I'll second.
Once again, any comments from the board, from the ordinance? All of those in favor of the motion? Aye. unanimous, Jan. Jan, you want to note that Michael came in 7:45?
And Rick, you'll let me know when you own the whole of the actual ordinance.
There's one other ordinance we have to consider, and that's item 11C, and it has to do with a variance time limit ordinance. Ricky, you want to give a little rundown on that, maybe?
The current ordinance requires, if, if a variance is granted or a decision by the zoning hearing board, that the applicant can get a building permit and commence construction within six months. The recent subdivision of the legacy property on Vettabook Lane, in which the applicant cut permission to subdivide a lot, they don't intend to, intend to begin construction immediately, as broad to like the fact that, well, basically, if they don't do anything, the variance goes away. We looked into the matter, and we're recommending that the board adopt an ordinance that brings it in conformance with another section of M P C that basically gives, gives the applicant time to, to commit, yeah, submit the plans and get the plans approved. And it's consistent with, there's another provision in there that spells that this, these words applicable to, and we're just making them, it's, it's applicable for special exceptions, we're making those same words available to applicable to variances and, or variances and decisions by the zoning hearing board.
Right, so the M P C doesn't speak about, it's sort of a self-created law that most municipalities have, that when somebody goes to zoning hearing board and gets an approval, whether it's of a special exception or variance, typically, most zoning ordinances say those decisions are only valid for six months, or 12 months, or 18 months, is actually what your ordinance says. And part of the problem with that, if what you're getting a variance for or a special exception for also then requires land development and subdivision approval, then there's an inconsistency, because the M P C says that from the date that you get preliminary land development or preliminary subdivision plan approval, you have five years that that plan remains valid and vested, and it doesn't get subject to changes in the ordinance. And so you could be caught in a situation, and it does happen, where you have your approvals from the zoning hearing board, it takes a while to go through the planning process, after you've spent your money on soft costs to go through the planning process, you might not be ready to go jump into development yet, and then when you go to do it, you realize, oh, well, those six months or those 18 months that my variance was valid for is now expired, so where am I? So that was another sort of inconsistency. We wanted to recognize the fact that the M P C does speak to this five-year protected window for those types of applications, but then the other thing we struck, you know, your, your ordinance changes, so somebody may go and get, you know, a variance for a setback dimension or height dimension, something like that, and then they don't do anything on it. And then 10 years later, they come back and say, oh, well, 10 years ago, you know, my neighbors were all different, but the zoning hearing board granted me the relief, and now I want to act upon it. Well, that's not really fair either, because circumstances have changed, you might have changed your ordinance, the neighbors have changed, neighbors who cared back, didn't care back then, now care now. So we thought there was some merit in having some expiration of the zoning approvals. I think six months is probably a little too short, and so we tried to strike the balance of a reasonable period of time, and then also recognizing that the M P C has various protections.
I have no problem, anybody have any comments or questions up there?
Kristin, well, yes, thanks. Kristin, will we start to see then in zoning hearing board decisions that this will be built into that, those decisions at the time of the hearing, and the decision is written?
It's not usually, because it already. It's not usually, because it already, it's a standalone section of your ordinance that applies. I have seen applicants, for example, Malvern Institute did, did this. They know full well going in, they're not going to be able to live up to that section. And so they ask the zoning hearing board in granting a relief to specify a different timeframe. And then at that time, the zoning hearing board can decide whether they want to grant that or not.
So a savvy applicant then is proactive at that stage?
That's right.
I guess.
Yeah.
They have to initiate.
They have to initiate. They have to request it. Like right now, just as an example, I'm representing Chester County. They're doing a trailhead for this, um, Skookoo River Trail. And we're going before the Borough of Phoenixville, conditionally used, and there's that six months. And I said to the Capitol Projects Committee, I said, well, we know county's getting grant funds, we're not even going to have the grant funds lined up. There's no way we can get this constructed in six months. So one of the first things we're going to ask for as part of our application is will you extend that? And we're going to give them a definitive date by which we think, you know, we think the county will be going and building this actual park still.
Anybody have any comments or questions up there? Anybody up here? Is your motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors direct staff to schedule and advertise a hearing for the zoning ordinance minimum.
I'll second that. You have any comments or questions from the board? From the ordinance? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
In unanimous, John. Thank you very much. I'm going to drop down because I know there might be some people interested. Well, let me do it later, 11B, to get it out of the way. Corbin has asked that that be tabled. He needs additional time to meet with some people in the building here to talk about this fire prevention program. Is everybody okay with the tabling? You guys down there, okay with the tabling? Hey, fellas, you okay with the tabling?
We're just talking about that.
That's okay? Okay, we'll table this to, to a date. Corbin will let us know what they, what they need to do. That said, we're going to move the item, we're going to move the new business and we're going to move the item 12A, which is a presentation of the budget which John is prepared to do. So if John's, John's ready, we'll, we will do that presentation. And if people want to stay for the rest of the meeting, they're welcome to do that.
Mr. Chairman, you don't need me anymore, do you?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Oh, that's nice.
Everybody have a wonderful holiday.
Not nearly, not necessarily.
I love not to be needed.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Mr. Chairman, it's with great pleasure that I present the 2019 proposed township budget to the Board of Supervisors and assembled residents in the audience. So the good news, right off the bat, this budget for the 16th and 2nd year proposes no increases in our real estate tax rate. I think we can sustain that for a few more years, which is good news. That said, um, there is a structural deficit here of $325,518 that would be paid for from existing fund balance, from transfer from fund balance. That represents, um, I think it was 4.2% of our overall reserves. So obviously, we have a large fund balance. We can, we can afford to dip into it. I'm not going to go through, sort of, this is a 31-page PowerPoint slide deck. I'm not going to go through all of the, all of the lines in, in super detail. I'd like to keep it kind of high level. But inflation is 2.8%. It's the same as what social, the social security increase. Health insurance is going up 4.7%, but other insurance, the quotes we're getting back are actually reflecting a decrease. So workers' comp, which is a surprise, is actually expected to go down as well. All total, this budget has $410,000 being transferred to the capital reserve fund for, for the cost of depreciating assets. Among my revenue assumptions, conservative assumptions across the board, right now, the, you know, the pundits project the wage growth will be, will go up 3.3% next year. I'm keeping earned income tax up 2.8% over the year-end projection, although I'm actually, sorry to get a little concerned right now about where EIT will end the year, so I may have to lower that number as we, as we proceed over the next three weeks before budget adoption. Real estate tax, property tax, we have about, um, close to $11 million now in additional assessments. That doesn't, works out to something like $13,000. Not a huge amount in the grand scheme of the budget, but definitely assessments are moving in the right direction. And, um, and I'm really seeing with the real estate transfer taxes, just, I think the, the housing market has stabilized at a point that I can kind of take the baseline assumption up from where it was. I mean, the, the, the number that I'm using still doesn't assume any commercial sales. We don't sort of count on big windfalls, but I think the residential market is, is stabilized safely at this point. However, on the flip side, cable franchise tax, people are cutting the cord, I think with the switch also in Hershey Mill villages from Comcast to Verizon. I suspect Verizon came in, sort of made some offers, some good deals, and, and that has resulted in less cable franchise tax. So, you know, we'll, we'll watch that carefully. That's about, you know, a little less than $500,000. So it's, you know, 3.1% decrease is, is, is noticeable. Okay, now the big thing that, you know, there's a big asterisk next to this budget when I say a $325,000 transfer from, from fund balance to come into line. One of the big asterisks is, is obviously, we don't have a labor contract with the police. Obviously, the board knows, people in the audience might not be aware, that we'll be going to arbitration in the, in the spring. At that time, we'll know the terms of the contract and we'll have a better sense of what our actual expenditures will be for emergency services next year. But for the time being, we're sort of using a placeholder budget. And when, if and when, or when that time comes that the arbitration is, is concluded, we, I will have to come back to you, we will have to amend the budget formally, okay? But that's something we can't do for another six months or so. A couple of big things here, we're going to, this budget proposes, well, as per the agreement with Westtown, we'll fund 110% of the minimum, uh, minimum municipal obligation for the police pension plan. But critically, will, the, this budget proposes taking 85% of that MMO out of regular tax, general fund tax dollars, but the remaining 25% from the separate East Goshen Police Pension Trust. So that's like basically $150,000 or so that we pull out of that trust. That's about 12% of, of the value of the trust right now. You know, keeping on doing that will eventually get us to a 90%, 100% funding ratio, at which point, that MMO will fall. So I think that's a good sustainable amount to pull out of the trust.
John, I forgot, I should have answered to this, but I told you, the MMO you're referring to is the work-based MMO, is that correct?
Yeah, but it doesn't make a huge difference. The bigger thing is that we're overfunding it. The, uh, the, you know, we, it's easy to gloss over these things. There are a couple of non-personnel items in the police budget that, that, you know, need to get resolved. And these, these prices are the, the total cost, i.e. that we would share with Westtown. But the chief has, has requested $19,582 for electronic ticketing system, $25,000 additional for legal expenses related to this arbitration, $13,865 for temporary staffing, surveillance camera at our substation for $2,400 and a sixth vehicle added to the, right, sixth vehicle instead of just five, which would add another $36,000. But again, that police budget is really subject to change. Nothing too big on the fire side. We do now have seven public works employees who are, who are, who are volunteering at the Goshen Fire Company, so that $100 a month volunteer firefighter stipend is going up. But otherwise, just, um, just basically status quo from the fire side.
John, excuse me.
Yes?
Do you mind if I just touch on that a moment for people that may be streaming on, on our employees? How we handle it if they happen to see a fire truck in Bowtree, there's a reason for it? John, okay?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, for those streaming that may not understand the real thing about the, our employees, most of our employees are also firefighters, some are chiefs of departments. And to help out Goshen for quick responses, what we've been doing is public works in the morning when they start, will actually, in some cases, pick up a fire truck, either from Goshen or from 56 Hershey's Mill, and they will take it to their job. So if we've got public works working in Bowtree, doing drain work and so forth, they will have, in some cases, have a fire truck parked there. If a fire call comes in, they take that vehicle, all perfectly certified as firefighters, run that vehicle to the situation, clear as soon as they can. So if it's a false alarm, they immediately come back. If it's a working fire, heaven forbid, they may be the first in attack vehicle, they would obviously attack the fire, but as soon as additional fire companies or staff come, they would immediately be released as soon as possible to get back to the public works. It doesn't happen very often. A lot of false alarms, so if they do take it, sometimes they're only going for a short amount of time. But I just wanted people to understand that there is a reason and a rationale for doing this that helps everybody. And the stipend that the employees gets is nothing compared to the additional time that they put in. Sorry, John, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
John, for the benefit of everybody that's here, it's important for everybody to know that what emergency, impact emergency services.
Yeah, and we'll get to that in a second. I think it's, and I'll say this for the second year in a row, is when I give the proposed budget, I'm making a proposal as staff to the Board of Supervisors, I'm speaking to you guys. So when you adopt the budget, those are the times I think that the best to explain it to the audience, so. The, uh, on the public work side, we do have an 8.8% increase. There are, and, and really a big reason for that increase is because it's against the, this, the current year year-end projection, which had so much savings on the paving side as well as at this point on the stormwater side, because the, the project in the Meadows is, is still, you know, it's going to come in way under budget if it's even done this year. We did put in some placeholder figures for, uh, sort of, a, a project to be identified later for stormwater reline and replacement of old, older corrugated metal pipes. You know, there's, there's always a project that, that can be identified for our aging stormwater system. For the, for roads and repaving, we'll hit Talman's Drive, we'll be able to do that once the sewer line is replaced in the next few weeks. Rossmore, Shandon, Traymore, Enterprise Drive and Salbrook Drive. One of the neat things Mark is going to try to find a, would like to find, I should say, a, a used roller, uh, you know, a, you know, a surplus roller for just under $5,000 to further reduce our vehicle rental costs for repaving. I didn't really factor this into how much we might save from it, but it seemed like a small investment that could yield the kind of savings that we realized by purchasing that larger paver this year. Um, on the, on the, on the capital side, Mark would like to replace the pressure washer for the new wash bay and a floor machine. Those are existing capital assets that we haven't been depreciating, so we'll have to treat those as new assets. And then additionally, $30,000 is, is reflected here as a new vehicle for the fire inspector position that's been, has been tabled for tonight by a placeholder. And I know David has a question or a comment about that. We can get to that when we talk about codes. Snow, NOAA is projecting warmer than average start to winter, colder than average end. It's going to be, winter precipitation is expected to be average to above average in our region. Sort of keeping the snow budget at the same level as this we adopted for 2018. We did go over the snow budget this year by a healthy amount. But this, this level is, is still higher than the actuals have been for the past, for many of the last, past several years. And then finally, this is, uh, important, for a long time, we've, we've been budgeting all refuse or trash-related expenses in the refuse fund. And this started to cause me a little bit of concern. The roadside litter program, that's always been a general fund thing, but the hazardous e-waste, uh, expenses, the e-recycling events, I think it's, it behooves us to move those to the general fund because it's arguably unfair to those of us living in detached homes, essentially subsidizing anybody in the township who might be going to one of the, the e-recycling events or the hazardous household waste events. They should be supported by general tax dollars. That's my recommendation.
Hey, John, I just want you to, ask you if you contacted Noah. Let him know we expect snow this Thursday?
Yeah, we'll find out about that. So there is three inches of snow forecast in southeast Pennsylvania region. Whether they actually hit East Goshen or not remains to be seen. Hopefully, it goes a little skirts, a little to the north. But, uh, yeah, we can't really afford any more snowfalls. If it's going to snow, we should wait until 2019.
Thank you.
That is my, that is what I've, I've asked.
Put that order in, John.
Yeah. So on the admin side, a huge decrease is, uh, is, is projected here, but that's really just a reflection of the fact that we're doing the wash bay addition and the building storefront this year, so the decrease is because we don't have those two big capital projects. I need to knock up the utilities costs just because of both PICO and especially Aqua's proposed rate increases. Yeah, so the, the, other things admin are pretty small. On the park and rec side, really nothing on the, on the programming side. I will give you a teaser, I'll talk about this next week when I do the October, uh, financial report. We're way over budget on Marymount. We're, I mean, we are, we are crazy over budget. And part of that is just because the rain's been so bad, so we've gotten killed on stone, we've gotten killed on our vehicle rental, because we've had to extend out those, those contracts for a couple of days, a couple of weeks extra. So we're going to be 50% over for the year. But it's been a learning experience too. This is our first go around, I think Mark's learned some stuff. So I am going to request that rather than budgeting $100,000 for, for next year for, to finish Marymount and to start Bowtree 1, that we do $120.
Are you comfortable with that, John?
I'm more comfortable than with 100.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, again, so much of it depends on the weather, which is unknown. Zoning and codes, so that's up huge. That's up 91,000 or 38.7% from my 2018 year-end projection. And the big driver of that, of course, as we've alluded to a couple of times, is this proposed fire inspector. I think the idea is for budget purposes, we'd hire them in, in the sort of April 1st timeframe, so when we budget in total salary benefits, it would be less than a full year. But we'd also need a new vehicle, we'd need a new computer, we'd need, you know, front modifications off this space. So you're talking all in here, you know, 130,000, 140,000 spread between codes for the salary benefits, admin for the building modifications and, and public works for the new vehicle. I would say that we just sort of budgeted it for a generic vehicle. Certainly, I know there's interest in exploring, you know, hybrid vehicles, and that's something that I need to talk to Mark Miller a little bit about, from a maintenance and mechanic standpoint, about whether there are other costs that would be associated with it. But just looking up the cost of a, of a Prius or a Camry hybrid, you know, $30,000 should, should get us there for a new vehicle.
John, just for your thinking, I, I would assume that the, that this position would require a four-wheel drive vehicle, something similar to.
We were thinking that this position would require basically a toolbox. I mean, I, they would be driving around to commercial vehicles on paved roads.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was, that was our internal thinking. I, I, this person would not be out, you know, digging trenches, so they wouldn't be going off-road, but do you, do you, do you anticipate that, or?
I, I'm, I'm just thinking that for the, for the inspections, although they can be canceled, you know, due to the inclement, foul weather, whatever, that it may not be a bad idea for this position to have, think about four-wheel drive, uh, due to weather conditions, in case he has to go, he or she has to go to a different remote area to get into the building. I don't know, it's just, it's just a guess. It's not going to be a firefighter.
Yeah, I mean, I defer, I defer to more knowledgeable people.
Yeah.
That's.
We'll, we'll know, John, hopefully before a month, we have to do the final budget, which Corbin should have this wrapped up by that time. I will.
Okay. Okay.
Sounds good.
John, the other thing, uh, Tom Kilbore is here. He wrote me an email. I didn't, Tom, I didn't have a chance to get back to you.
Can we, uh, post home questions until the end of presentation?
Questions until he's done, please.
Thank you. Um, there's nothing really out of ordinary among ABCs. We talked about the historical commission being self-sufficient by selling ornaments, so we'll see how that goes. commission being self-sufficient by selling ornaments, so we'll see how that goes. This is the Marty report, so this basically shows that...
John, I just, let me stop for a second, because Tom, Tom sent me an email, unfortunately it's been out, and I haven't got back to him. However, Tom, there's money budgeted in the bond fund for the engineering course associated with Paley Pike Park. That's why you haven't found it in the cap, it's not in the cap, it's in the bond fund.
Well, I mean, so what Marty is asking, what Marty's coming about is, is for, to implement the Paley Pike Quarter Master Plan, there was talk about concurrently with the engineering work for segment C, well, segment C, D, and E, I guess, to, to sort of lay the groundwork for eventual street scape improvements that would come after the construction of the trail, the biggest being, you know, conduits and things like placement of, of streetlight poles and things like that. But that's, you know, I'm talking about it with Mark Gordon, that's just something we can, we can, a bird we can kill as part of the larger engineering exercise for the trail.
Point being that there's, where, where you need to find the money is in the bond fund, for the engineering course.
So critically...
It's not that we haven't budgeted, it has been budgeted.
So, page ten shows that when it's all said and done, according to this budget projection, we will, the general fund, not excluding the operating reserve fund, just under two point five or two point six million in it, will be just under five million dollars thirteen and a half months from now. So this is where the money comes from, and obviously, our income taxes every year, the pie gets a little bit bigger and bigger and bigger, while real estate property tax holds, gets a little smaller and smaller. This is comparing revenues from year-end projection to, for two thousand eighteen to the proposed, this, this doesn't show a lot, but you know, EIT is obviously the big driver of our, our revenues. Where the money goes, so this shows emergency services at just over fifty percent of the general fund budget. This excludes debt service, you throw debt service in, it's less than fifty percent. But that's, again, this number may, you know, be subject to change depending on what happens with arbitration. And this shows comparison of proposed expenses to last, the current year's projected expenses. Emergency services goes up, admin goes down. So, that's important. Okay, other funds, this daily would feel nothing out of the ordinary here, we got a notice from PennDOT, it's basically, we're projecting it to be essentially flat from this year to next year. The big one is, of course, the sinking fund, so let's go through the, this table shows all of the expenses that we have, you know, the, the, I, on the next slide, I'll talk a bit about the, the new assets. One of the big, the replacement assets, the roof is obviously the big one, I think there was some confusion there, a year ago, we did the roof over here on the public works garage, but we didn't do the actual township building. There is some evidence of, of, well, my office, I think, would be the first to go if, if there was a big, so good for me, I guess, what I'm trying to say. And then hopefully, we can get some of the, the Hershey Mill Dam will be, will be well underway by the end of, could be even completed by the end of, well, we'll see. Certainly, a big chunk of it will be done in two thousand nineteen. Okay, so justification for the new assets in the capital reserve fund, I talked already about the pressure washer and the floor machine are just replacing existing assets, but we hadn't been depreciating them previously. That new small pickup truck or, or vehicle, to be determined, will be used by the new fire inspector, as I said. The radio booster, we've already talked about it tonight, but that would basically ensure that emergency responders can maintain contact with the command and the county DES in the event of a serious emergency, like, for example, the Bellingham. So for, for us to install would be thirty-one, a tick below thirty-one thousand dollars. And then I budgeted a hundred thousand dollars as an estimate for construction costs for segments F and G, and that's basically just any vehicle rental, any MCA, any, any materials and supplies that Mark needs to actually pave from three fifty-two to line road. But all of that will be reimbursed by grant funds. And finally, the budget proposes a hundred thou, a hundred thousand, well, a, a transfer of a hundred thousand dollars to the sewer capital reserve fund for the cost of a new sewer camera. So we have a sewer camera that's being depreciated on the general fund side, but eighty percent of the use of that camera is in sewer, in the sewer system, about twenty percent is in the storm sewer system. So it's basically, we transfer this fully depreciated amount of money for the camera into the sewer, into the sewer capital reserve fund, start to depreciate the sewer capital reserve fund, and basically, when we buy the new camera, pay a hundred thousand dollars out of the sewer's capital reserve fund and twenty-five thousand dollars out of, out of the capital reserve fund to, to pay for, to equitably allocate those costs. Transportation fund, you know, in February two thousand nineteen, we will have, well, PennDOT will, or PennDOT's contractor will have finished the, knock on wood, will have finished the Route Three Interactive Signal Project, so we'll be able to close that out. Obviously, that's fifty percent grant funded, and that's reflected here. But we've also included sixty thousand dollars for new streetlight associated infrastructure at the last entrance to the park, so for, for, for kind of an offshoot of the trail, for pedestrian safety, and later on in the meeting agenda tonight, there's an item you need to vote on to, for, for us to proceed with PennDOT on that, on that project. Sewer operating, you know, the, the big thing, and I can kind of lump together municipal authority sewer operating and sewer capital together, one of the big things that came out of the municipal authority meetings since I've started attending has been this question of why we are purchasing capital assets out, out of the, out of like the sewer fund or out of the, or out of the sewer capital reserve fund. Really, they should be purchased out of the municipal authority, and, because technically, municipal authority is making the decisions on them, and technically, if they're, if they're fixed assets, they're owned by the municipal authority and not the township. Is to, so basically, transfer money from both sewer operating fund and the sewer capital reserve fund to the municipal authority to, to purchase those assets, rather than purchasing directly out of township, out of sewer or sewer capital reserve fund money. I think that makes a lot of sense. So what you're seeing here in, in the sewer, the sewer funds this year is much larger transfers to municipal authority for project costs, rather than those costs being borne by those funds. I think that in the long term is gonna make it easier for the audit, too, because we have two separate audits, we have a township audit, and we have a municipal authority audit, and just keeping those assets sort of just more firewalled. So, you know, on this slide, I've listed some, the sewer operating fund would pay for the new assets, and I've, I've bulleted them out here, whereas the sewer capital reserve, which I'll talk about in a second, would pay for the replacement assets. West Ocean ONM is gonna go up a little bit, we've had conversations with Mike Moffa, not, not a huge jump, but it, it does appear that it's gonna go up. And then West Town is raising its rates again, which will in turn mean that we have to pay more money for, for Snyder Knoll and Summit House, because all their sewer flows to West Town's system. I would note that West Town's cost, the sewer treatment is, you know, roughly fifty percent more than ours, actually, it's much a hundred percent over ours, so that's a big, it's a big subsidy that, that we, that we provide there. And we'll talk about this last one more in, in April when we set the sewer rates, but we'll, I've put some money in, and we can decide whether or not to proceed at that point, but put some money in for a new payment portal, so basically, just the same way that you maybe pay your Aqua bill or your PICO bill, by logging into a system that shows you in real time what your balance is. We, we poked around to create a payment portal for sewer and refuse as well. On the refuse side, I do want to draw your attention to that number of year-end fund balance two thousand nineteen proposed. So according to this budget, we are gonna fall below half a million dollars in fund balance by the end of two thousand nineteen. We are getting absolutely slammed by the cost of recycling. It is, it is, it is, whereas it used to be a source of revenue, it is now a major source of expense, and that's going to drain that fund balance. So I don't think we need, not proposing an increase to the rate for next year, for this year, for two thousand nineteen, but I do think that as part of the long-term planning session in May, we need to roll that out, and we gotta start looking at potentially raising the rates in two thousand twenty. I, what, what I don't wanna do is get it, is draw it down too much, that we all of a sudden have to jack rates way up, like if we're gonna raise rates, do it sort of gradually, like sort of inflationary or slightly above inflationary levels, so people don't get a kind of, you know, a January surprise a couple of years from now.
Just a current contract.
We, this is the, this is, we have a third year, I think.
A second. This is year two. I think we have three more years.
We have three more years after, at the end of this year, yeah?
Yeah.
So we, and then we also talk about changing up the routes to next year.
Is that a straight five year, or is that a three plus one plus one?
It's a one plus one plus one plus one plus one.
Oh, that's so performance-based, I got you.
But five, we're five years.
Yeah.
The bond fund is really hard to budget, and it's just, it's just a guess here, so I mean, I, this is the one I will not, you know, bet my 401K on, on being even close to this at the end of the year. Those, these funds get expended when they get expended, but I do think, you know, two thousand twenty-one, we should be, you know, fully, fully spent down the bond fund. Now, I will draw your attention, too, it's maybe hard to read, the, the, the bottom right-hand corner, the total cost of all of these projects when it all said and done, seven hundred, seven million, six hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars, compared to total borrowing of about eight point one million dollars. So because of these grants we're getting, we, we're starting to get surplus money on the general fund side, not on the sewer side, that's a, a little bit of an issue that I'll show you on the next slide. But we're starting to get in a situation that we may have unallocated bond proceeds that we can use for other things. For example, construction of Paley Pike segments A and B, even a big one. Well, we, what's that?
Fourth firing open space.
Or, well, we'd have to change, we'd have to adopt coordinates to do that, that's another, you never know. But, so this, this slide is something I didn't, don't normally put in there, but it reconciles sort of the, the total bond proceeds. And remember, we're accruing interest on the bond proceeds, subject to arbitrage rebate potentially, but we're still accruing interest. We've gotten grants, so we've had some cost overruns, we've had some cost underruns, so basically, at this point, we have, I'm looking, we're looking at seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in surplus unallocated general fund bond proceeds that we can reallocate. We do have this, this small deficit on the sewer fund side, just because project costs seem to be escalating a little higher than what we thought for West Ocean, it's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars potential deficit. We could reallocate, I've spoken with our fund advisor, financial advisor, we can reallocate that money, it's a complicated formula that can be done, that, that can be done, but basically, we will have to make a, this is something I'm watching carefully, we will have to get to a decision point in the next sort of six to twelve months on what to do here.
Is, is that, is there any indication of a possible refunding of a portion of that?
To pay down the debt? Yeah, I guess that is, that is an option, too, that always exists.
May not be enough to refund, because it's gonna cost a piece of change.
Yeah, yeah, but we do certainly, the fees part of that. So municipal authority, this is obviously a separately lent from the township, but I go back to that point I made, that for two thousand nineteen, what I'm proposing is all of those capital costs are paid by the municipal authority, and then municipal authority is reimbursed from the sewer funds. So the big, it's just the capital, yeah, I'll get to that one, get to the sewer capital reserve. Here's the sewer capital reserve. So the big, the sort of four projects that are, that would represent the transfer to municipal authority here, need to replace the generator Hershey Mill Pump Station, we need to replace the Magneter Hunt Country Pump Station, the Hunt, we need to replace the Muffin Monster Hunt Country Pump Station, and we need to replace the generator at Ridley Tree. So that's three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars we transfer municipal authority. Now, the good thing about this, this is, this doesn't affect sewer rates. So even though our sewer fund budget is, like, we have all these capital projects on the sewer side, the sewer fund budget is only going up by one point eight, or no, I'm proposing it only goes up by one point eight percent. So, big lots of projects, but because so much of it is funded out of basically depreciation of, of, of assets, it doesn't really affect rates, so that's a good, that's a good thing. Operating reserve is what it is, no planned expenditures there. I just wouldn't be remiss if I didn't point out, too, as part of the budget process, I always also present, and I'll do this very briefly, and just bring, make the board aware of it, is the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-three Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, which just shows all of the sort of projects that, that, that sort of are in the queue, in the pipeline to, no, unintended, sorry, guys, to, for the next five years. And so this document talks about everything from, you know, simple things like replacement of computers, replacement of, you know, servers, that, things like that, to, you know, pickup trucks, but then the really big ticket items at the park, the trail, Hershey Mill dams, I mean, I think the key things here that I wanna make people aware of, you know, take a look at page eight of this, which lays out the timeline for the trail, you know, by the end of two thousand nineteen, our hope is to get, gone out to bid for, for basically segments C through E, and then, you know, do those in two thousand twenty, and a little bit in two thousand twenty-one. A and B obviously is the great unknown right now, and depends on, you know, grants and things like that, but that wouldn't be until two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. So, you know, we are tracking it, and these, these things get updated every year. Milton, on the dam side, we have construction of Milton in two thousand twenty, and then we have construction of Hershey's Mill next year, and then finishing in two thousand twenty. So lots going on, on the capital side in the next two or three years. The only, and then on, on page ten here, I just draw your attention, I have a placeholder, too, King Road and three fifty-two, it's something we need to just keep on our radar, working with East Whiteland. Obviously, we've been, be aggressive in looking for grants to fund this, but, you know, that is something we do need to be aware of, and really, this would, once that project's complete, and sort of the way I've forecasted it out, we would draw down the balance of all of our non-impact fees in our transportation.
John, just a quick question on that one, is, is East Whiteland, do you know if they're budgeting and that they've got a similar target date?
No, I, I'm pretty sure they're not budgeting anything for two thousand nineteen. That's why it's a CIP, it's a wish list.
Yeah.
To keep it on our, on our radar. These are our sewer projects, lots next year, and it's slowing down after the knock on wood. And that said, I won't belabor the point. So that's all I have there. I encourage those of you in the audience, both watching on YouTube, as well as our friends in the audience here, if you have any questions, please, this is your, this is the people's budget, this is your, these are your tax dollars, and it's important that you guys, you know, make your voices heard about concerns you have about, you know, whatever, when it comes to the finances of the township. We wanna hear them, we want to incorporate those concerns into a final budget package. We are scheduled to hopefully adopt this budget on December fourth, under the second-class township code. The, the budget may not be adopted in fewer than twenty days after it has been advertised, and in, you cannot, the difference between the proposed budget, the advertised budget, and the adopted budget, it may not change by more than ten percent in the aggregate and by more than twenty-five percent in, in any quote-unquote "major" category. So we have some flexibility to play around with this between now and December fourth. As far as a certain procedural step, I would ask that somebody make a motion to authorize advertisement of the two thousand nineteen budget.
I would make a motion to, first of all, before I make the motion, John, excellent presentation. In fact, I said to John, I had the budget presentation at East Bradford, that's why I came into the meeting late, I don't begin to... I came into the meeting late, I don't begin to, I am not worthy, I am not worthy, it was, mine was quite, quite simplified, of course, a little bit different financial picture, but I said to John, I said, I'd love to pirate a few of your slides so I can fill them in with our numbers and put that on their website, so really, a commendation to you, John, for a really well-done budget and presentation. With that said, I would make a motion to advertise the budget for the 20-day review period, and I think that's all we need to do.
Second.
Comments, your questions from the board?
John, I do have it. I do have one thing, just right before, or we can do it after we do it, it doesn't matter. The next time you have a little work session for the budget, every so many years, we, we've sort of looked at this a little bit, we have always been in the, I'll call it the buddy-buddy system for our sewer rates, that everybody gets treated the same, we don't have sewer districts, we only have...
Right, right, right.
I'm, I'm a little bit disturbed on West Town's cost, now, I'm not blaming West Town, but to hear you say that sometimes it could be a hundred or a hundred and fifty times, where, you know, you said it was much larger than some of ours, should we again revisit that, for the West Town customers, which basically are condos, do we need to stop subsidizing them because of the cost?
Well, I, I think, I think that's a challenge, because the people in the condos are using less sewer, less water in sewer than the folks in the single-family detached, so you're, you know, we went to this, our equitable rate structure based on actual wintertime water usage or sewer usage, in order to treat everybody the same. I think you're raising a really good point that I've always had a lot of trouble with, and I think, I think we need to have conversations with our partners and friends in West Town about how they district, and I think that might get us to, 'cause we are effectively subsidizing their detached homes...
Correct.
Rather than, but that's an issue that we need to take up with West Town, rather than, I think, rather than our rates. I think our rates are equitable, but as hard as they are to explain to residents, they're very equitable, but, but the, the issue is with West Town period.
Okay, well, that, that's...
And we can have, and I'm happy to...
Let's keep that on our radar, please, to, to do that.
Got it.
We can schedule another meeting with West Town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's always a pleasure, yeah.
Okay, John, thank you very much, if I second, I think we all second Mike's opinion. We're ready for food, ready? Anybody out there have any questions, one question? Is everybody still awake? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's, we, let's finish what we're doing, and then we'll go back up to, up to what we left, go. We're down to 12B, item 12B, which is consideration, the application for the traffic signal at Paley Pike and Hibbert Lane, that's over by the park. Ricky, you wanna bring Airplay up to date?
Basically, the motion will be authorized, submission of an application, where you're attempting, once more, to try and get a signal at the park entrance.
What are our chances of getting it this time?
That's, that's...
I mean, is this a shot in the dark, or if we keep being a pain, are they gonna give in?
We're gonna keep asking.
All right.
The issue before, if I remember, when we applied, it was we applied for a grant three or four years, and we did get the grant, this is...
We're, we're, we're on a theory, we're gonna keep asking until they give us the permit.
Yeah, okay.
Is, is there any value to sending a letter, telling Carol, committee, Senator Killian, that we're doing this, and we appreciate anything they can do?
We will, we will contact the senator, representative, ask him for supporting letters, yes.
Do we need a motion on that one?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the township manager to submit the attached application for traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the proposed traffic signal at the intersection of Paley Pike and Hibbert Lane.
Second?
Second.
Comments from the board? Audience, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you very much, John, a hundred percent, a five oh. Next is consideration, the Applebrook-Goff agreement, to, to, I don't understand, this thing, a few years, and it seems to be okay to me.
Jason, the agreement expires at the end of this year, basically, we mirrored how it worked in the past, lots of low five dollars every, every other year. So Jason notes that there was a disconnect there on the caddy fee, Applebrook has raised the caddy fee to a hundred dollars, however, for whatever reason, they were only charging us eighty, and one of the problems was that they couldn't like get caddies to work, because if they worked for Applebrook during their days, they would get a hundred dollars, when it came to East Ocean days, they'd only get eighty dollars, so people, obviously, people did not wanna work, so they, again, we're putting it back where the caddy fee's at, a hundred dollars, and we pay half of it.
Well, I remember when it was maybe twenty dollars for a loop, and if you got forty dollars carrying two bags, it was like, oh my gosh.
Well, that's back in the day of wooden putters, too, Mike. Bobby Jones, I carried his bag a couple of times.
But anyway, the motion will be authorized, the execution of the Applebrook-Goff agreement.
Some, Mr. Chairman?
Does anybody have any comments or questions?
I have, I have a comment, since we got down to the gravel level here, and we, we specified the, that we're gonna have hot dogs and hamburgers, I played in the sounding one year when it was a hundred and two degrees and there was no water on the course, I seriously would like to add a condition to the, to the contract that says that they'll provide water on the course.
They're releasing the carts, or...
It was bad.
The times that I played, they had, you didn't have any water at the, at the T's.
I remember that day, I was playing back in those days.
I, I would suggest that, well, I'll talk to Jason, for, we'll provide the water, we have a lot of water here, and...
For purposes, and, tonight, I don't want to delay the approval for this, but I just wanted to make the point.
It's a good thought, though.
The thing is, I think Ricky's got the right answer.
We'll rely on her.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Five oh, John, thank you. The next, in the last item, one twelve, new business, is a consideration of picnic road.
This is, I guess, Carmen suggested about picnic road, the suggestion was to relocate it across the road, between the, by the, by the butterfly garden and the bridge, the issue is that the area where the existing pavilion is, is currently used by kids while their siblings are playing baseball, running around, and there also is some concern about people, if you put picnic tables there, people get hit in the head with foul balls, so the fault was relocated across the road, and that way people could see it and they could also watch their kids in the playground. Jason ran this by the park board, and they were okay with it, we would refurbish the existing pavilion, make it hand accessible, relocate some picnic tables, some grass trees.
Is this in the memory of, is this in memory of Mr. Batavio?
This is, I would, I, that was, that was one of the, well, I know the memory of, but... Somewhere, we will get his name on the pavilion.
I'll go back to my same spiel that I made before, that this playground is, with the picnic road, will be a destination area for East Ocean Township, so I would ask, I looked at the area with Jason, and it's a good idea, gets everybody out of each other's way, I would ask the board endorse this, to continue our ongoing...
It's very close to Kegel Playground.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Just, just across the swale.
Right across the swale, and then I'm telling you, based on what people are doing in there, you put in picnic tables and stuff, it will be a destination for more than just playing on the equipment for an hour or two.
I agree, I think, I think it's a, it's another example of continuing...
Do I have a problem with this? Make a motion. Make a motion.
I move, I move to approve the Carmen Batavio picnic grove improvements as noted above.
Remember, yeah.
I'm kidding. I move to approve the picnic grove improvement, improvements as recommended by staff.
Second.
Anybody have any more comments up here, out there? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. While we're here, I notice one other matter, and the ones we'll take care of it is a stormwater agreement.
Stormwater agreement for Mr. Herman at 1304 East Strasburg Road.
We wanna make a motion.
I move that the board authorize the chairman to execute the stormwater management operation and maintenance agreement for 1304 East Strasburg Road.
Second.
About to go up, back up to number seven, but... What? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
About to go up to number seven, but since we're back on this back page, there is no liaison reports, but David, do you want, David had the first meeting of his pipeline Jazz Force last night, and David, you, would you like to recognize one member of the Jazz Force this evening?
Yes, Bill, Mr. Bill Wegeman was at the meeting last night, thank you for being there, and it was our kickoff meeting, kind of organization meeting, and I just want to thank everybody for participating and look forward to...
On our way.
One word and upward.
On our way. As I said earlier this evening, David was super prepared for that meeting, and it took a little bit, now, Mike, Mitch, and I did all we could do to try to interfere with his organized way of doing business, and we weren't successful. So congratulations to David, congratulations to everybody that's on the committee, and it's, it's gonna be a human's challenge, I must, I must admit.
And we are still looking for a couple members, so, you know, keep your eyes open ears, you hear somebody talking, it seems like they could have an interest, I think it will be, I think Bill will, will welcome a couple more members who are invested and have particular interest areas or expertise they might bring to it, so...
Marty, if I may, on a similar topic, this evening, we interviewed three people for the Sustainability Committee, and for those of you in the audience and out in TV land, I would like to make an appeal, we're still looking for additional members for the Sustainability Committee, if anyone has any questions, they could feel free to contact me, so just wanna use this opportunity to, as a recruiting platform.
I would say that the interviews that we conducted, like, the people were really enthusiastic about the Sustainability Committee, and it's, it's something that David had brought with him when he, when he came on the board, it's, we saw some stuff in the newspaper, and we followed through, and it's gonna, it's gonna be something new and different, and something we've never done before, and I congratulate those that are involved, I don't, Rick, I don't, I don't see any reason that we can't vote tonight, or, or, people we interviewed this evening, so everybody, except for Mike, who wasn't here.
Wasn't here, but I read the resumes.
But you did this thing going, so David, if you're comfortable with the people we interviewed, why don't you go ahead and make a motion?
I left my resumes in my briefcase.
You have the things, you have the names?
Oh, here, I, I think I have, I think I have the back.
Do you have any background?
Here with you, I'm stuck in here. I don't know, I haven't...
Can't wait, then, I might have one.
You want me not to vote, 'cause I wasn't there, I mean, I read the resumes, but I didn't...
You're allowed to.
I was pretty impressed with what I read.
Even more impressive from here.
How many people can say they have nine degrees?
You have, you want to get my coffee from the back room?
I'm ready to go.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following persons to, for an appointment to the Sustainability Committee, Jeff O'Donnell Jr., Christine Supple-Marshall, and Angela Najica.
I'll second.
I think we're, have done all the answering questions they have, and this one, anybody else in the audience, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Well, you're three along the way, David.
That's great.
Okay, now we're back up to item seven, it's Emergency Services Report, I'll ask Carmen, Carmen, as he does at every meeting, to give a report on those that have submitted them to us.
Hello again, everybody, the reports I'm gonna give you are for the month of October only, for the different entities. First, we have Goshen Fire Company, monthly operations, this is for East Ocean only, the fire responses, twenty-four, fire police responses, fifteen, EMS responses, a hundred and sixty-nine. If we flip over to Malvern Fire Company, this would be for EMS statistics, October only for East Ocean, thirty-two calls, one basic with zero transports, and thirty-one advanced life with twenty-four transports. Switching to the other end of our township, we go to Good Fellowship, and this is for East Ocean only, for EMS, the call volume, East Ocean had fifty-four calls, which is nine point five percent of Good Fellowship's calls. So any questions, just let me know.
Any comments or questions for the board, for the audience, all those in favor of the... No, you don't. I have a, I have a suggestion, we've talked about this mucho times, about the impact that Billingham, Wellington, Hershey's Mill has on the workload of emergency services, particularly EMTs, so, and if we don't start doing something about it, we're gonna continue to talk about it forever, so, since Mr. Batavio is very familiar with this situation, I would suggest that we appoint him, the chairman of, of a, of a group of people who we feel comfortable using, to try to figure out what we can do, even if it's nothing more than going to talk to these people, to see if we can get some financial re-support for this in some way, shape, or form, or talk to our legislators, or whatever we need to do, but as far as I'm concerned, we're gonna get nowhere if we don't do something.
Marty, just to clarify, what, what cost are we incurred?
With the extra cost, it's a significant cost that we...
Wait, what cost is the township incurred?
I'm talking about the EMTs, the, well, it was to us through...
If I'm not mistaken, the governor signed a bill that now allows fire companies and AMI services to reimburse, to seek reimbursement, even if they do not transport, it was one of the bills the governor just signed.
That's a huge...
Wow.
I didn't know that, that is huge.
I'll, I'll, I'll track it down.
That is absolute, you give them the break.
Just the thought of us calling, they did something.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, let's, let's find that out, and then we'll go further.
I still don't remember news.
No, we just don't need a chairman anymore, we just made you one chairman. Matter of fact, we just...
I was the chairman for ten seconds.
You're better off in memory, anyway. Okay, we done that, and let's get over to the minutes of the sixteenth and the twenty-fifth of October, Janet, I've seen some corrections in on that, does anybody else have any that they wanna share?
Thank you, Janet.
Yes, thank you for submitting.
With that, is there, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes of Tuesday, October sixteenth, 2018, and Thursday, October twenty-fifth, 2018, as amended.
Second.
Comments or questions for the board, for the audience, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Janet is, Janet likes, I've decided it, Janet loves periods in colons and semicolons and stuff like that, and I know one thing, if you ever send Janet a letter, it's not, that's spelling wrong.
Yeah, you're gonna hear about it.
No spelling standards either.
You learn something every night when you come to one of these meetings. Okay, next is the, the bills for this period of time, Carmen, do you want to walk us through that, baby?
Sure. I did review these, it's pretty extensive, but it's pretty cut and dry, if you've been on, it's overpaying all the same people, does anybody have any questions, if they do, bring them up now?
I, I have one, what repairs were done to Pine House?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, was that added up to, what was that, like, twenty thousand dollars?
No, five thousand.
No, there were two, there were two for the Pine House.
Or were it page what, give me page?
Page, batch two of nine, page three.
Now, there's another one next to it.
It was, Michael Hero did a, he polished like a counter or something, right?
And there was some work on the windows, but they, we haven't done anything down in a while, that was the problem.
And I think the windows, didn't, didn't they all, didn't he have to, like, re...
We hadn't done anything, we haven't done anything down in a while, it's old, it's an old building.
It's old. I think Mark keeps it pretty good on.
Maybe now, or maybe later. Do we have any other comments or questions on the bills?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we graciously accept the receipts and pay the bills pending our voting this evening, for the re-expenditure register, submitted by Chris and John.
Second?
I'll second.
Any comments up here, out there? All those in favor of the motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The next and the last thing is the correspondence. There is one that's at least someone notes where you, that is the Delta Pipeline, so that combined, well, it's going to send out early January, it's a environmental assessment situation, starts, I think, in three months' period of time. So they, they've been, they're a little behind where they wanted to be, but at least they're moving along, and we are an intermediary in that situation. And it'll see where, where we go from that, Carmen, or bring one up, I think.
No.
The Westford Circle, we've talked about before, that's an environmental situation with the, with the wastewater.
The gentleman now has, has planning approval, now he has to get his actual permit. Nothing's easy.
No, it is not.
I got, I, there's a letter in here from, from a resident, one of the two residents, Kevin and Claire Free. I will, I will answer that, it has to do with the, the issue we've been going through. They, they are opposed to the reclassification or two, which is not exactly what's going on. But we get, we continue to get letters or emails pretty much daily, when people either in favor or some cases not in favor. What's going on there? I, I will tell you that there will be probably at least one and maybe two if that means, one of which would be a hearing, at which point you'll have to make a decision, either A or B, being yes or no, when we get to that point in time. We're going to get more information. Every, I would really encourage the information to be very clear, particularly about how they might do with the personal authorities or. So that people in the audience have a clear understanding of what it is that we're attempting to do, and, and if it's possible to shade in areas or color in some way that can define the type of open space and so forth, that you would save by, by the different ways that we can go over to develop the property, including what we're considering now, if this is all possible.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a note from our public work director, Mark Gordon, in response to Mike's question. For the Plank House, rebuilt all windows, painted the exterior of the building, cosmetic repairs, and sealed up where needed for leakage.
Lot of work.
So, yeah, just a little bit more than like minor ceilings. So thank you, Mark, he must be watching us.
We also got a, a very nice letter from Scott Saunders, who's been at his training tree, and he's also on our conservancy board, but they had an issue with some trees down at some house condominiums, and he sent a very nice letter in complimenting the public works department, and Mark Miller in particular, with respect to some of the assistance that he gave them in that regard. So, once again, our public works department is, is out there, and he is, it's unbelievable the amount of appreciation they get from our residents. It's incredible they do it, and that's a totally outstanding job. And last but not least, we got the, for those that need to know, we got the quarter report with the right to know request for September, ending in September. That said, is there anything else, anybody else want to talk about up here?
I have, I have a general question, if I could, for the board. Is everybody getting my scanned reports for the municipal authority along with the engineers, Mark Miller and engineers' report? I am sending them to the, you know, the emails. Is everybody getting them?
I believe so, I, I usually read your, if I don't go into the report, I read, I read your notes.
The summary, I just want to make sure, because I got a bounce back of.
I did not get.
And it's not David, because I have David, I did have that other name for him, the, the. No, no, not when I send my reports, because it's in a, I have you guys all, guys and gals set up under BOs.
Yeah.
So when I hit BOs, you all go, and if I hit BOs with staff, everybody gets it. Mark Gordon, Mark Miller, John, well, John's included in the BOs. But I just want to make sure everybody's getting them.
Yeah.
I didn't get the last one. But also, David's email had, somebody had the wrong, in a, in a group rating, had the wrong end of it.
That wasn't me, was it?
I don't know who it was.
It's been floating out there for a while, and it just, we will purge it eventually.
I think John sent us an email to, to look that name up and.
I, I checked mine, so check your, check your supervisors.
The issue is, a lot, a lot of reply to you, it replies under that OFG instead of ORG, so it doesn't go.
Yes, we'll get that purged eventually.
I checked mine, I, I'm okay with mine, I know that. Okay, anybody, is there a motion to adjourn? I don't think it, is, second?
Second.
Are you guys in shock out there, you want to adjourn too? You did, hey, Alex is here, how about that? Hey, no, what?
Have a nice Thanksgiving, everybody.
I wish I could be here.
Hey, you know, did you tell, oh, I told Ron that you and I took the care of it last night, so he was all set up together, so he can, you know, home and sleep tonight, because I know he was super worried about that. Are we, are we still agreeing? I think we might still be super. What is the meeting?
It's our regular meeting, right?
You called me, I said, this was your second.
If I see you, I'll tell you that, if I don't see you.
I still have my notes, it's just this treatment. Never seen it, mom. Having so much food.
By the way.